Right here. Yeah. There you are. Good enough? How's it going?
Well, guess what?
What? Yeah. It like, like me laughing.
Like they landed.
Yeah. Yeah. Is there any?
Devil May Escape.
Good evening, friends. I'd like to call to order the Board of Education meeting for May 27, 2025. So standing as you are able, please, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by none other than Rick Wiesel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I even had the camera set on you.
Thank you.
There you go. A little memento. There would have been a superintendent's recognition, but our, one student cannot make it this evening, and the other student is going to be coming in late from coaching tennis. So when Tommy gets here a bit later in the evening, we'll move this to number six. I'd like to pass the microphone over to Superintendent Stephen Lutz.
I'm retired.
Well, someone's retiring. Who's running this show?
I think we're calling Carol up to talk about retirees.
I can't do it. I'm retired. Well, you can do everyone but you.
I'm retired.
You're retiring me out, man.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to come up tonight and, excuse me, honor our retirees for the Class of 2025. On behalf of Seline Area Schools and the Board of Education, it is my absolute privilege and honor to give a warm and heartfelt thank you to the Seline Area Schools' Class of 2025 retirees. Unless you are in education and you do the work that we do, or you sit at the board table every other week, it is really difficult to understand the amount of teamwork that is required by a number of departments with diverse expertise required and needed every day to successfully run a school district. We operate like a small city, and I say that all the time, and we rely on each other in order to run like a well-oiled machine so that we honor all students at the magnitude and success that the Seline Area Schools can provide. It is about the people who collectively make up a learning community that is safe and clean and nurturing and provides nutrition and is rigorous and engaging, one that has state-of-the-art facilities, one that is diverse and supportive. It's really important to be inviting every single day, and it's important to be organized and inclusive, to make every student a priority so that we can reach, so they can reach their individual potential. Without a collective effort, it is impossible to do our jobs. In tonight's group, we honor 17 retirees for a combined 412 years of experience, and you'll often hear me say institutional knowledge. It is their unwavering commitment to education and students that has allowed the Seline Area Schools to be a destination district for kids and families, but also for employees. Thank you to their dedication for their years of service. We're super fortunate to have many of the Seline Area School retirees share their parting thoughts and words of wisdom in the slideshow that Jackie Martin has put together, and that will continue to play through. And if I remember right, Jackie will put it up on the website so that people can see it throughout the summer. Last spring, Ms. Martin worked with the High School Writing Center to create a poem titled "A New Beginning," which has become our new tradition, starting last year in 2024. So reading the poem this evening is Cara Davis, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, and I'll invite her to the podium.
Yep, I'll add that. Yep. Thank you, and thank you again to all of our retirees. As a veteran teacher and colleague in this district for over 27 years now, I feel very proud to be able to send you off with this poem. So, thank you all. "A New Beginning" by students at the SHS Writing Center. In halls where wisdom's whispers flow through every space and every row, you've sown the seeds of ideas and light and fostered dreams to take flight. With gentle hands and a heart so wide, you've been a beacon, been a guide. Through seasons' changes and years that flew, and all you've taught, they carry you. Through new visions, creations, and designs, the stories told, the shared times, each activity planned with care so true, each student noticed all you do. You've walked these halls with grace and might, turned timid minds to soaring flight. With patience, love, and steadfast cheer, you've shaped futures year by year. Now as you close this chapter's page and step onto a freer stage, may joy and peace your days fulfill, with memories sweet and moments still. Though you depart from this old place, your legacy, it leaves a trace, in every light and every heart, a timeless cherished wondrous part. So thank you, colleagues, for all you've done, for battles fought and victories won. May your new journey be as bright as all of the mines you've set alight. Thank you.
So why is Ms. Davis reading that, you ask? Because you will all get a framed poem. And what I'd like to do after I thank a few people is call up the retirees that are in the audience today and have them come up. You're going to stop by the table in the back, grab your poem, framed poem and a rose, and come on up front to be honored. And then once everybody's up here, then we'll take a picture with the Board of Education so that can go out as well. But it is really important, as I mentioned earlier, we are a well-oiled machine, and we start working on this early. But thanks to the HR team, the coordinators that work behind the scenes, thank you to Betty, who works tirelessly to help us with all of this, and Jackie, and for the SWWC food group that came tonight, and it was interesting, all of the gentlemen that came with Danielle were all hot food students. And so that was mostly cold food, but they came to prop the hot food, and I was asking what they preferred, and so that was interesting. So thank you for all of the folks that helped this evening, but really, most importantly, thank you to our 11 retirees that are here this evening and all of our retirees that dedicated over 412 years of their lives towards students and making our community better and helping kids fulfill their dreams and what they want to do. So I will start with Nate Bush. Nate taught industrial technology for 24 years. So Nate, if you want to stop by the back table, Betty will give you your frame and your rose, and you'll come up front.
Laura Washington is going to be the rose wrangler.
Yes, Laura, thank you for wrangling roses. Try and say that 12 times, wrangling roses. Kristy Kundev, special ed teacher for 23 years in the district. And I also want to thank all of the spouses and partners and students, kids of teachers that came this evening. That really means a lot. Trish Fair, special education teacher for 23 years. Mary Howley Wiesel, Special Population Coordinator for SWWC, 19 years. Jeffrey Kazee, high school social studies teacher, 20 years, which I just learned Jeff's taken a gap year before going back to school. I didn't know gap years are for us. I have to remember that. So thank you, Jeff, for teaching, teaching me that. Steve Lott, District Superintendent, 28 years. Nate Lampman, high school band director, 28 years. Sue Fan Lin, Director of Pooh Corner, one of my favorite names of a program, Pooh Corner for 19 years. Carol Melcher, Principal of Alternative High School, 37 years. And Carol made it back last week for graduation, so we appreciate seeing her in the building last, last week as well. Kimberly Munn, Speech and Language, 26 years. And then Deb Palmer, Para-educator, three years. Deb had worked in another district, and she does much more, including Para-educator. We see her morning, noon, and night. She works games, she's in the buildings. And Deb Palmer has retired from Seline with three years. If there's anyone else in the audience that was able to come and didn't our SVP let us know, because we'd love to honor you. I'm going to pause, make sure we're not missing anybody. And then again, with all of you here, we're going to take a picture with the Board of Education. Jackie will, will work her magic. We just want to thank you all for everything you've done over the last 412 years and the significant, the significant impact, which we'll never know as educators, the imprint we all have on students, and that we will never know how much we impact them and help them figure out what they want to do when they grow up. So thank you for everything you've done, and we'll take a moment to get some pictures. Thank you.
We're ready to get back. Are we okay, Ben?
Yeah.
Great.
You didn't come here.
Not yet. Because there is no public comment this evening, we're going to scoot right down to number six, a response to previous public comment. And actually, I would like to take a few moments for my own little commentary. Each year around this time, the Michigan Association of School Boards, the MASB acknowledges milestones in training and additional service for our trustees. This year, on behalf of the MASB, I would like to present two pins. Count them, two. Trustee Tim Austin has earned a pin. The award of merit, he, whoa, to reflect the completion of the 100-level CBA trainings and an additional 45 hours of credit.
He didn't even know you earned it.
Congratulations.
Good job, Tom.
And in addition, Vice President Jennifer Stubben received the Master Board Member Award. This award reflects completion of nine advanced-level credit courses and a minimum of 368 credits of service. So congratulations, Jennifer. Well done. This is for you.
Thank you, sir.
I love the golf clap. Thank you. Sure.
And in addition, one more MASB award to announce, and that goes to Board President McVeigh, who received a new specialty award for community relations. Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. Do I get a pin, too?
You do. You get a pin as well.
Thank you. It's always a lot of fun. And our new board members, at the end of this year, if you've completed your 100 levels, you will be eligible for your board member pin and possibly even an award of merit. Ask Tim how to get his. I don't think he's quite sure yet. Okay. I think it was for the inter-rater reliability and the superintendent thing that you did and all your other showing, just showing up. Excellent. Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moves, Stubben.
Darcy Berwick is seconding it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then we have ourselves a seven-zero agenda. Thank you so much. We have action items, four of them right now. I'd like to, first of all, entertain a motion to approve the resolution in which, which designates Michael McVeigh as a representative of this board to cast a vote for three candidates to vacancies on the Wash, Board of Washtenaw Intermediate School District on June 2nd. They are as follows, and we will fill in those names as we go along. Do I have a motion?
So moves, Stubben.
Support to these.
Thank you. JT. Now, at this point, there is one, number three at the bottom is, there's only one candidate, as you all read in your packet, Dorcas Musili. And so she would be by acclamation, but we still have to cast that vote. So that leaves two remaining spots. We have Mary Jane Tramonton, Diane Hockett, and Eric Roberts, or Eric John Roberts. And we'd like to start the discussion on which names we, or how we'd like to vote for these. I, just personally, I am going to support the two incumbents, Mary Jane Tramonton and Diane Hockett. And just leave it at that. Whoops. Comments from any of the board members? Tim?
That's who I had marked on mine, too.
I'm not actually taking a vote right now, but we are, we are going to be, well, thank you. I appreciate that.
I would just, in future iterations, it'd be nice if I saw that one of the candidates included a little bit, Diane included a little bit more information. It would be great on their bios if they could include just a little bit more for future discussion items. I mean, we could Google and do other things, of course, but I thought Diane, including some of the very helpful things that she did, helped me want to support her.
So it sounds like you're supportive of Diane Hockett at this point. So at a certain point, I'm listening for other names before we have to put this to a vote. At this point, I'm hearing only Mary Jane's name and Diane Hockett's name, and that counts for the two candidates unless somebody wants to argue vehemently for one of the other, one of the three that we haven't mentioned yet. Please do so. Brad?
I will say that I, my support does favor with those two individuals as well, but I do want to recognize the fact that Eric did come and visit us, the fact that Eric did spend time with us, that he sent us a number of items. I think Eric would do a really good job. It's just, I'll be honest with you, like, if there are two individuals who have just done a really good job, and I don't find any reason to not continue to support their candidacy going forward. So I think he just got caught in a really good pool, too, right, of candidates and what have you. But I wanted to say how much I appreciated his enthusiasm and his, you know, putting himself out there.
I get that, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
But to be clear, I would stay in the course.
All right. Well, here's what I'd like to recommend, then, unless I hear from others. I'd like to enter, this is for Betty's, three names, Mary Jane Tramonton, Diane Hockett for the second, third-year term, six-year term, and Dorcas Musili for the, sorry, for the, for the two-year term. And put it to a vote, then. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. And by the way, if the vote ends in a tie, I was informed about this, if the vote ends in a tie at WISD, and Darcy, if you're there on my behalf, you should know this as well, you are a free agent. Once you cast our vote for these people, that's the vote. But when, if it, if it is a tie, then you're a free agent, you can vote your conscience, or your heart, or your liver, or any part you'd like. Thank you so much. I'd like to entertain a motion to, thank you very much, folks. I'd like to entertain a motion, and Betty will take care of the rest of that, to support the resolution authorizing the WISD to place the question of authorizing the millage for career and technical education purposes on the November 4th, 2025 ballot. And I'll pass this over to, first of all, before Steve comments. Could I have a motion, please?
So move.
That's Tim Austin.
Darcy Berwick.
Darcy Berwick, who's very quiet because your mic's not on. That's okay. Better keep it off the whole meeting. Is it working now? Say something.
It's great to turn your mic down, isn't it?
Oh, my God.
It's working. Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk a little bit more about the millage proposal, in that it is for the expansion of CTE programming across the county. Washtenaw County, as many of you know, is one of the few counties in Michigan that doesn't have a tech center. And even though this millage is not per se to go to build a tech center, it is to expand programming. And we need to be, you know, more competitive as it relates to manufacturing jobs in Washtenaw County and beyond. And we're ripe to do that. There's a lot of momentum with career tech ed programming. It just so happens that we have the SWWC here tonight to talk to us on our annual update. But, you know, there's a lot of passion around this area right now, and we feel that the time is now to capitalize on that. Ryan Rowe has expanded in his role as Career Tech Ed Director in Washtenaw County, has been doing a very good job of, you know, looking at expansion of programming, especially on the east side of the county, which we know there are more opportunities needed for our students. So, and in addition, we have a Career Tech Ed Advisory Committee working towards the millage proposal. And I plan to stay, I'm on that, and I plan to stay on that even after I retire. I'm really passionate about seeing this through. So, thank you.
Is there any discussion from the board on this matter?
Only a comment. Enthusiastic support, and I'll see you at the poll.
Similarly, super excited for this. Takes a lot of people to make the world go round, and we need every one of them, and appreciate everyone's contribution to that.
Brett?
The one thing that I enthusiastically support this as well, because I think it will increase availability of programs for students, especially like across the county. I see this a little bit as like an equity issue, too, for helping some of those areas where like there might not be as much reach or much availability for these programs. Like, I think about where I teach in Manchester being in the, you know, more in the southwest corner and some of those kinds of things. So I think this would expand and grow some of those programs, and it'll strengthen our programs here as well. But, so I just think that this is good for the entirety of the county. I'm mindful of our tax base and our taxpayers. And if I didn't think that this was a really good use of funds to support kids, then I wouldn't be as enthusiastic. But I don't sound as enthusiastic, I should, but I am. I'm very much on board with this, and thank you.
I did want to say, I wasn't quite 100% convinced until Ryan Rowe spoke about this Washtenaw being a CTE desert of sorts, and really great graphic of the rest of the state. And Washtenaw was plunk in the middle, where, an area where you should not have expected there to be a desert. So let's land this plane and take this vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. Thank you so much. The, we have supported the, putting this on the ballot. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the closed session minutes of May 13th, 2025, for the purpose of collective bargaining, 8C of the Open Meetings Act. I'll let Brad start this one off. Just looking for a motion.
Done. Motion. We can read the closed session minutes.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Tim. I was scanning the audience to see who might not know what we're doing quietly for a minute and a half. We're reading closed session minutes that aren't available to the public, so, but this is probably not your first board meeting, so, okay. And with a motion from Gerby and a support from Austin, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Great. We have a motion. Finally, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the MHSAA 2025-2026 Membership Resolution as submitted by Superintendent Lott. This is required to maintain membership for junior, high, middle, and senior high schools, and must be formally adopted by the Board of Education.
So moves, Stubben. Go Hornets.
Support to these.
Thank you. Do we have any, Steve, did you want to comment on this, or?
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, we sign off on this every year, but I did want to read the primary tenets of it, just so everybody understands what we are signing off on. It talks about the Board of Education, governing body hereby, hereby delegates the superintendent the responsibility for the supervision and control of said activities, and hereby accepts the constitution and bylaws of said association and adopts as its own rules, regulations, and interpretations, as published in the current handbook, as the governing code under which the said school shall conduct its program of interscholastic athletics, and agrees to primary enforcement of said rules, regulations, interpretations, and qualifications. So that's, in essence, what we are signing off on. And I just think it's important that we know that that's our course of action each year. That's it.
Any comments from the board? Questions? Queries?
I have one little question.
Please.
I'm sorry. Brad, did you have something? I just had a question on the dates, because we're academic fiscal, but I didn't know if this needs to follow that. And I was wondering why it said August 5th, or I'm sorry, August 1st versus July 1st?
I think it's because that's technically the start of the next sport athletic season, which begins in August 1st. They start, they say that that's the beginning, because there's sort of that dead period through July. And I believe that's why they're doing that.
Yeah, yeah, dead week. August 12th or 11th is back to, but that makes sense, because the official date back.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Officially, it starts in August, and then...
Gotcha. Okay. Thanks.
Great. Unless there's anything else, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Excellent. Thank you so much. We are now a part of the MHSAA. I'd like to introduce two fabulous people, Kara Stammer and Trent Trout, who will introduce themselves a little more thoroughly. And I think you brought an entourage with you? Yes? Okay.
So I'm going to start, and then Trent will follow up with a separate presentation. So... There you go. Thank you, Ben. All right. So thank you for having me. I'm Kara Stammer. I'm the director of the SWWC. My second time presenting, but I thought I would just kind of backtrack and share a little bit about what the SWWC is, since we have some new board members. And in essence of the millage, I just thought it would be, for anybody watching, kind of what is the SWWC? In hindsight, after we've done all this research, I think we're all guilty as charged for not branding ourselves better, so people are aware of what CTE is. So that's kind of my personal push. So on the screen, rather small, but what the SWWC is, the South and West Washtenaw Consortium, we are made up of six school districts, Chelsea, Dexter, Manchester, Mylan, Lincoln, and Saline. And we accept 11th and 12th graders into our career and tech ed programs. So it's an application-based, they're application-based students. We primarily go out and focus on the 10th grade students at all those districts, and encourage them to apply. And again, we're primarily working with 11th and 12th grade students. Roughly about 920 students are sitting in our CTE classes. We have programs at Dexter High School, Chelsea's CTE Center, which is across the street from Chelsea High School, and then here in Saline. We also have our Building Trades Program, which is off-site this year in Dexter, and then also our Cosmetology Program, which is across from Walmart on Michigan Avenue. And as you all are aware, it's moving to the middle school shortly, so we're excited for that. So that's pretty much kind of an essence what the SWWC is. It's small, but here are our 23 programs, 24 if you include work-based learning. Again, I tried to just highlight this. We had a new student and parent guardian family informational webinar last week, just again, to kind of, now the students are accepted into our programs, our enrollment is settled, and we are just looking at how we can educate our students on what to expect, because I call it, I often call it controlled chaos, with students moving between schools, and some are on the bus, some are driving, and what that looks like. So our 23 programs. You can go ahead to the next one, Ben. Thanks. I'll pause there and just highlight some of our staff members. What an honor to be here and present on the night where a few of our important staff members are leaving us. So seems like last year and this year, we've had some, some retirees that, that meant a lot. So I've had the privilege of working with them. As a marketing teacher for, you know, since 2012, I was hired into that role. And then to see them leave, and I'm charged with the, finding their replacement. So that's always, that's been a challenge, just because they mean so much to our programs. But these are the teachers that were hired last year, meaning this was their first full year, I say last summer. And then we also have a couple postings this year. All of our hires, I want to say, I feel, are doing an exceptional job. They fit right in. I know we've talked about, where do you find CTE teachers? Because, you know, back in the day, it was, you know, what, let's cut CTE, and it was all college-bound. You're going to hear me say tonight that we shouldn't be competing with AP classes and any other classes we should be complementing. So many of our classes align with those students that are college-bound. And I have some data to show with, to share with you. But anyway, so our new programs, or our, our new teachers, I should say, again, fit right in. And we see on there a couple vacancies, Mary's being one. She was a special population coordinator. That role specifically supports all six districts with breaking down barriers. So her role will be to support, be supporting students who speak a different language, who might be, have, be moving around because of military, might have IEPs. That role is to go around and support to make sure that they're successful in their CTE experience. And then we just recently hired Sam Hotep to replace Nathan Bush for the video news production and photography teacher. He was a career and tech ed technician in that role for two and a half, two and a half years. So I feel like he will step in. He knows the ins and outs of that program, and he has some background within video news. So we're excited about that. And then Nicole Latman also is leaving us to go enjoy, enjoy retirement with her husband Nate Latman. So I'm going to, this is our enrollment. Again, this is specific to Saline only. And I apologize that it's small, but basically, enrollment, Saline-specific enrollment for next school year went down about a percentage. So right now, we have 438 students that have enrolled. I shouldn't say it went down, I'm sorry. It increased. Went down last year, and now it's, it's increased. So when we talk about the Vocational Millage, I'm just going to kind of tie it in. So our house, just to put things in perspective, we only have so many seats in our classes, and we have to share those with six districts. So when we look at Health Science specifically, we had, we have 40 seats between the two hours, and we had over 85 applicants. And so we're charged with who deserves to, you know, who do we give that spot to in that seat, or in that class? And it's hard. It's, students want to know why they didn't get selected. And so if that millage, when that millage passes, especially after your discussion tonight, thank you, when that passes, I foresee us hiring another teacher, creating another lab, and then increasing enrollment in that specific program, because Health Science is one of the top five industries that we see growth in. So that's important. Another waitlist program is Cosmetology. So that, too, we share it with Ann Arbor, but I know I just got a phone call from Ann Arbor, CTE Director, asking, do we have extra space? Because they have a need, and we have a waiting list as well. So those two are just two examples of programs that have a waiting list. Okay. So this kind of starts our recruitment strategy. So how do we, you know, brand ourselves and make others aware of what CTE is and what the SWWC is specifically? So this year, we had our SWWC open house. We paired this with Saline's open house for Try Two, and I thought it worked well. You may have attended or have been made aware of our business showcase that we used to have, and that was kind of intentional to, to piggyback off COVID. And the feedback from staff, and staff specifically, was that it almost became too commercialized, and we didn't get students in classrooms to see the labs. They were more there for the businesses. And then when one business called and asked if they could sell memberships, I was like, okay, this isn't the purpose of this night. So we need to rethink this. And so we've kind of gone back to just a simple open house. We had our CTE Student Council members providing, you know, guidance to families as they found their way around Saline High School. And it, I thought it was a phenomenal event. Feedback was good. We had all our off-site programs in the Commons, and it was a good, it was a big point of pride for us this year. So that's one way, that starts off the recruitment strategy. And then we also host the 10th graders. So on, on January 10th, it was a snow day, so we had to put it into, on January, but we had all 10th graders from all six districts come to our, to Saline High School. Once again, we had all programs there, and students were encouraged to select two programs to go visit. And again, ideally, that happens before our open house, so that they would bring family members back to then go and visit. But because of the snow day, we had to be flexible this year. But great turnout. Again, our CTE Student Council members, members are hosts for that day, and they walk around and share best practices. So that's exciting, too. All of this is piggybacked with hashtag get hired, so I'd be doing a disservice if I didn't mention Mary Viesel's role in this. So she, this is kind of, she created hashtag get hired. It's been a very meaningful event. So we have local business partners come, and they, pretty much, they hire. They teach students the skills of interviewing, talk to them about what, you know, best practices are within their industries. So that was a fun event. And then that, in essence, would tie into potentially getting work-based learning opportunities. So these students are looking for, for work in those industries, and this is a good start, a good kickoff to that. So we'll go ahead and, yep. This is a slide. So every year, the State of Michigan does a follow-up survey, and we ask all of our seniors within six months of graduation to provide us data on what they're doing. How are they utilizing their skills that they learned in their CTE class? And I just, I thought this piggybacked nicely with, with the hashtag get hired. So if you can, in the focus on the upper-left corner quadrant, where it says 96,000 students are enrolled in some type of work-based learning, where they are becoming made aware of programs or industry. So guest speakers coming in, field trips, that's the highest number, because that's probably the most accessible. But then as you move to the right, the numbers decrease, and that's just because it gets more, you know, a little more investment, there's more investment with time and, and scheduling for students and so forth. But the goal would be to have that bottom-left quadrant as high as the top-left, because that means they're having real thoughtful internship experiences. So anyway, just 105 students are engaging in work-based learning. That's, we need that in our industry. We need people, kids to get out there and utilize their skills that they learned in their, in their CTE class. And then on this slide specifically, so when we look at the data that I'm speaking of, this is found on the CTE Michigan website, 33,000 students roughly took the survey. And when I say what the feedback shows, so 33 took the survey, and this is when I say we're not competing, we're complementing. And the bottom-left graph shows that 62% of those students are enrolled in college or university. So once again, we are not, yes, we have traditional trades, but it's important to know that we have students that are college-bound. That also is not the end-all, be-all. I mean, we have students that need to go into careers. I know, I may be preaching to the choir, especially with what's going on in our economy right now. But, so it's important to know that, because I think that is one stereotype that I continue trying to break down, is just that we, you have many choices in CTE. And then another important piece is the 77%. I always tell the students this when we have in our, our awards ceremony. 77%, almost 78% of students say they are using the skills they learned in their year-long CTE class, where they're at six months later. I think that's super, super important. So I always tell the students, never should you be sitting in your CTE class saying, when am I going to use this? You will be using it when you go to work that day, or when you graduate. And I think that's the power of CTE. Okay, next slide. All right. So again, just a, a little bit, one of the requirements from the State of Michigan is that our career and tech ed programs, when they're under Perkins Five, which is a federal funding model, when you're under Perkins Five, you have to offer some type of credential to the students. And I tell them, this is your competitive advantage. So when you're sitting in a CTE class, you are, you are being taught a, a certain skill set, and then earning a credential to put on a resume, to talk about during an interview. And that, once again, if you're sitting, you know, in a row with candidates, that could be the thing that sets you apart, is that you have that skill set. I will take a moment, and Trent Trout's going to follow up on this. Again, he's done a phenomenal job. But, you know, just with our automotive program, my worlds collided when Justin Sly, our automotive teacher, it's a two-year program, those students are walking away with their ASE certification. So when I'm sitting in, at the, at the car dealership in the service station, and it says ASE certified technicians on staff, like my world, it was just an epiphany, right? Like, this is what our students are being set up to accomplish. They can leave... They can leave school and go and work immediately in a service station. And I think that's phenomenal and that's the power of these credentials. So when you're under Perkins Four, a few of our programs are still under Perkins, I'm sorry, under Perkins Four. And when they move to Perkins Five, this is required by the state. So we have to be offering it. So that was the point of that slide. And then of course, you, this is a lot of what you hear in the, in the limelight, if you will. Our CTSOs, our career technical student organizations. So FFA, DECA, Skills USA. And I put pictures because I like to tell stories through pictures. And 31,000, almost 32,000 students participated in one of these organizations. And I will tell you, just as a former DECA advisor, this is life-changing for students. If it's not traveling, if it's not getting their first professional outfit to wear during competition. Again, I think it's just, this is where they will tell their stories. I've had students write college essays about it. They find their success and their identity in these programs. So thank you for supporting it because, and, and hosting and honoring those students because they are very, very prideful when they are in those competitions. It's fun to watch them succeed in those roles. And then lastly, just kind of to wrap up, again, I want to reemphasize or again, that we are not competing with AP classes and all these other classes where I, you know, when a parent says, we can't fit it in their schedule, well, let's find a way we can. And it starts with the counselors, it starts with career counselors, it starts with us out in the community talking about what this can do for you. And the, the best is when, you know, I'm talking to a parent and they're like, oh, I didn't know that was a CTE class. Absolutely, it's a CTE class. And it's our job to do a better job of identifying that so they understand what career tech is, and it looks different, traditional, non-traditional, all of the above. So I'm going to pause there. Trent was going to follow up with his specific, because this is a huge honor and what he's going to share with you momentarily. But I can take questions if anyone has anything specifically about SWWC before he talks about his computer integrated manufacturing program.
Jennifer, then Brad.
I have a couple. So the first thing, I, I recalled going out to a Habitat for Humanity type location with another trustee a few years ago. And I'm thinking about what we just voted on and this being on the ballot in November. So if there's an opportunity from now until November for trustees to get involved, maybe highlight some of these programs, again, to your branding comment earlier. And I won't get into that considering you used to teach marketing, so I know what you're doing there. But if there's any help that we can provide in kind of highlighting the, the programming within the community by visiting, you know, the house that they were building in Ipsy that I got to go to, or doing things at the high school, or Dexter, or Chelsea, or anything else. I think that that would be a really good opportunity. I mean, in the health sciences class, I haven't done that yet. So, so think about ideas because we can kind of help support you in different ways up until November. I had one question about, speaking of marketing. So marketing and accounting are within the consortium. And I, I do agree with you that there is a little bit of a branding thing, some work to be done there, right? Especially if you want to increase enrollment and get, get this rolling for the election. Why is it that our business classes primarily sit within the high school? So like supply chain, personal finance, intro to business, except accounting and marketing are sitting in the consortium. Why is there a separation?
That's a great question. So we, they're just not state approved, not, it's just not, not a state-approved career in tech ed. So the state only approves certain classes. So marketing and accounting are one of them. What we're finding specifically with accounting, the enrollment has struggled in that. So as again, a former business teacher, we have half the school going into business, but yet it's one of the smallest departments. And, you know, I, it's just such a large umbrella. And, you know, if a student takes APE con, then they have a hard time taking a full-year CTE class. So again, it's, it's what does that schedule look like? But to answer your, your question directly, it's just because marketing is a state-certified program and we don't have those in all of those classes. And it, it takes money to, you know, like build a lab. And again, the vocational millage would help that so that we can expand programming as well. But accounting specifically, I had an epiphany this year when I was talking to the, the principals and superintendents that accounting is offered as electives at all the home schools. And so students, again, when it comes to scheduling, they're picking, do I take a trimester or a semester of accounting or a full year? You know, so for, I mean, I'll sit here all day and say, my, my, my youngest is a business major and I made her take accounting. I made her because it's just going to help you when you get to the next step. So it's necessary, but they can get that, a little bit of taste of it, if you will, as an elective at their home school and then not have to take the full year. So that's one of the reasons, you know, that we may see that come out of the consortium and then put in just a different class that, you know, doesn't, there's not competition at the home schools. So some of that is just communication and what's been there as electives.
All right, super helpful, thanks. I think it's a definite area for opportunity for the high school overall. I mean, there are a lot of kids going into business.
Yes, we talk about it with our counseling staff all the time.
And I'll own my bias on this one, but, but great. Thank you so much.
All right. First thing I want to say is that I want to thank you for having such high-level programs that do provide excellent credentialing for kids when they're done. For my, my, my kid is an example of a kid who AP Biology, AP Calculus, like he's way smarter than me. But yet like he's also going to be, I'm so grateful he's going to be part of Health Sciences and he's going to become a CNA at the end of, of that process. So like I, I am thankful that my son gets to have both of those experiences. And I think it'd be awesome if he was able to, to do other things. I'll be honest with you, so my question and my wonderment is about graduation requirements a little bit. So sometimes, I'll, I'll be honest, you get caught up in the scheduling process as a parent, trying to make sure you get all your, your boxes checked and then like some things fall under fine arts. And then you're like, well, I gotta get to, you know, this many credits of fine arts. I almost wouldn't mind seeing a world where those two things were separated and there was a dedicated, and especially if we're going to do millages and we're going to support it, where there was a CTE pathway and some type of thing where now my student, now my, now my son feels like he could also do the auto tech piece because, you know what? Now it doesn't impact his ability to choose something else he might need as a graduation requirement. Does that make sense? And in order to be able to do this SWCC health sciences thing, he really had to work with the schedule because it's a big piece with the two hours or the two hour block.
Yep, especially in the spring, the last trimester.
So anyway, I just wonder, is that related to the Michigan merit curriculum? Or is that related to just conversations we could have?
No, the, the Michigan merit curriculum does honor, they have a whole CTE. So for example, without like welding, you can earn your Algebra II credit in welding if we are covering a certain amount of curriculum of the Algebra II in welding. So we, there is a sheet that we have, that all the counselors have. And so, but I caution everyone, and I will, I'll say this because it is really meant for students that that is their pathway. It is not meant for every single student because I'm not sure that some of our local universities and college will honor that credit for that class. So I want, I always, when I, when I talk with students and I say, you can get that credit for welding, but if you're looking to go into something at Michigan or Michigan State, you gotta make sure that they're going to accept that credit. And, and sometimes they don't. And I don't want to set students up for failure. The other thing is we have some students that are, that will go on scholarship and play division one sports. And, and right now they aren't on the same page with those CTE credits for the Michigan merit curriculum. So that's a conversation we're having. So it, it's, again, that Michigan merit curriculum, they, I, I, they do honor certain credit for our CTE classes, but really it's meant for the specific student that that is their career pathway. So I always, I'm, that's okay. I'm, I will honor that credit, but as long as you know that there's a potential. So it's important to know your career path.
And I want to, I want you to know, I appreciate that perspective a lot, right? Because we don't want to take seats away, as we could tell from programs, for kids that want to do that as a, as a career. However, I just love the fact that kids and, and young people can be versatile too and learn how to weld, but also be doing something else for a career. So I appreciate that.
Thanks. Also, our classes are, they complement one another. I mean, you could take welding and computer integrated manufacturing. You walk through the Toyota Research Center and again, that was another aha moment when there you have everything that's in Trent's lab and then everything that's in the welding lab. And I'm like, this is a one-stop shop for two of our programs. So they, again, it can be a one-two punch, 11th and 12th grade and be set to go and, you know, become, become hired by some of our local companies. So yeah, thank you.
So I just want to say, you know, I think the Southwest Western Consortium is like a gem of Celine. And we, I, I feel like we sometimes take it for granted. And I think our students take it for granted as well. You know, you walk through the open house and just amazed at what kind of opportunities that these kids have. So I'm thankful for that. I've got two kids that are at Michigan State now and they've all been, they're, they've both been through some of your programs. So they're part of the 61.7%. But they talk to students at their, their, their class with and they can't believe the opportunities that they've had here in Celine. And, you know, I, and that's why as a no-tax kind of guy, I'm completely in favor of this millage because it get, will give more opportunity to other students to have these same opportunities and, and maybe help us, you know, take, maybe not take it for granted. And, and our students will be more happy with it.
Thanks for saying that, yeah. We would love every student that wants to take the class to be able to take it. Because I always tell students, if you take that year-long class and you walk away and you're like, hmm, that wasn't for me, that's fantastic. That's a win for me too, because now you've just, just saved yourself either money or time in discovering that as well. So to me, that's a win. Most of the time they end up realizing it's what they want to do, but yeah.
I love the stats that you gave. And when you were starting to show some of them, a question popped in my head and you answered it. So I really appreciate that. 96.7% graduation rate for the kids that are in these programs compared to, it was 80 something, 80 point something comparatively. That's huge. You focused on the 62% that went to a four-year college or university, but I also noticed that 29% went to community college. And with the recent changes in Michigan, I think that's a huge success too. So that's 90, 90% plus of the kids, if I'm doing math right.
I had that highlighted myself, yeah.
Are going on to post-secondary formal education. And probably a lot of those from community college are also going to a four-year college, I would assume. If we can get that on that eventually, that would be fantastic. And I don't want to, I don't want you to take your time and educate me because I know a lot of members of the board already know this a little bit more. But one of my questions is, as I was looking through the curriculum list and the enrollment for each section, a lot of the business-related stuff, which translates into college, great, had more enrollment than some of the other ones. Is one of the bigger challenges for waitlisting, because you, you had mentioned like cosmetology, is it because that curriculum is more hands-on, so there's less room to do that? What is a way that we can combat that? Or is there a plan with the millage, if it passes, to be able to expand on those?
So a couple things. Specifically with cosmetology, you have to have a certified cosmetologist. It's a one to 10 ratio. So if you go beyond that, we have to increase staff because we need to have a certified cosmetologist on staff. So specifically about that, also their program, so we use, they earn, those students, they take that class their junior year, they work through the summer and then their senior year as well. So they earn 1,500 credit hours to be able to sit for the state certification tests now at this time. So we, we've looked at, especially with attendance going down and, you know, just, that's been a huge feat, as we all know, is just getting students to come. We're looking at, could we do, offer a diff, not the full gamut, if you will, for cosmetology, but maybe focus on hair, or I'm sorry, on nails or, you know, like eyelash, just different parts of the overall, overall license. And so that would offer, possibly allow us to enroll more students if we didn't create that 1,500-hour requirement. So again, we can only have 20 students, 20 juniors, 20 seniors. And we're at max because we have four staff in that facility. So, and it's just a lot. And to answer your question, the numbers are lower in our, I would say, our more traditional classes just because of safety and because of the space. We lower our cap because, again, when Trent is trying to teach, he has how many different machines in his, in his facility, in his classroom, and it's like there's only one of him, right? So we talk about, can I turn my back on a student when they're working on that machine? So to your point, marketing, I could have 28 students, but not necessarily in those classes. Even health science, I mean, so much is hands-on that, you know, it's, that's a piece to it, is hiring more staff and offering more sections so that we can, but that need, that means space. And again, that means money and the vocational millage. That's the whole purpose. So I'm hopeful that people will understand the why. Thanks for that question. Yes, I could stand here all night. So thank you for listening. Trent has, I know he's eager to. So Trent's going to talk about a huge grant and we specifically, he lived through this year, SME Prime. And he received it, we learned of it in last fall, in the beginning of the school year. But he wanted to live through it and, so he could speak to it. But it's a huge honor and we have one of the project managers, Sarah Walker here from SME Prime, has joined us. So she actually wrote a letter that I'm going to pass out to each one of you while Trent goes ahead and gets started.
Good evening. Yeah, I think my presentation will fall out perfect with Kara so you guys can actually see some of those opportunities in, in real, real time. So for those who don't know me, I'm Trent Trout, manufacturing instructor at the high school. This is my third year teaching now, so still fairly new, but I'm really enjoying it. But I wanted to take some time to highlight the grant that we received from the SME Education Foundation. So first off, the SME Education Foundation works to inspire, prepare, and support the next generation of manufacturing and engineering. And they do this through Bright Minds Student Summits, SME Prime Programs, scholarships and more. So last year we applied to become a SME Prime program. And I'm proud to say that we are one of 118 SME Prime schools throughout the US, 50 of those being in Michigan. So the Society of Manufacturing Engineers Partnership Response and Manufacturing Education Program has not only provided us with a multitude of resources in order to better prepare our students for the future in manufacturing engineering, but they have also supported us with nearly $360,000 in equipment, curriculum, and professional development. So you can see here, we can highlight some of the equipment that we actually received. So all this equipment, it's important to note that it comes with those industry-recognized certifications. So each piece of equipment that they donated comes with a separate certifications for students. So we were fortunate enough to receive a Snap-on Sterit Precision Measurement Inspection Kit, a Fanic cobot, Verisur 3D Gauge CMM Arm, Festo Mech Lab Trainer, Festo AC/DC Trainer, Festo Mechanical Drives Trainer, a Stratasys Industrial 3D Printer, and much more than that. So you can see kind of some pictures of some students with the certifications. So this is our first year getting off the ground, but we were able to pass out a lot of different certifications this year and get hands-on with a lot of the equipment we received. So that's kind of the, the grant that came through. That's all the equipment received. Now how has that affected us this year in manufacturing? So first off, competition is a big thing in, in our CTE programs, like Kara was saying. So this year, we had five different manufacturing-based competitions. So that's the most that we've done so far since I've been there. These competitions range from local college competitions as well as national level competitions. Proud to say that the four we've attended thus far, we podiumed at least one podium finish at each. So it's really awesome. We had a really great year. And one of those finishes, which you may have seen in a couple articles, ended with a $10,000 grand prize for one of our high school seniors. So that was really cool, really great for him. But we have Skills USA Nationals coming up as well in June, so that'll be exciting to see how they do there. So in addition to the competitions, we've also done a multitude of field trips for the students, probably a record number this year as well. So we're able to go to a lot of these different industry partners in the area. So Libere, Zoller, Kyocera, R&amp;B, right in our backyard. So that's really nice for the students to be able to go there. As well as we've had the chance to go to a couple different trade shows this year. So we went to the Automate Trade Show, which is, focuses on automation. And it allows the students to kind of connect with some of these industry partners that could be potential future employers. So that's really cool for them to see all this different equipment and the newer stuff. As well as the Rapid TCT, which is a 3D printing convention. And SME, the SME Education Foundation hosted a Bright Minds Student Summit there. So that was really cool for the students to go. They got to kind of engage with different businesses, go on a little, a little scavenger hunt throughout the industry show floor and see some new stuff, talk with the industry partners. So that was a great way that SME was able to support us as well. So, and then kind of the last piece of that puzzle is the certifications, just like Kara was talking about. So this year, we issued 128 of the precision measurement certifications. So those are micrometers, calipers, tape and rule. So those are starting at the freshman level with some of my intro classes, and then they go all the way up to the senior level. So the students have the chance to earn certifications freshman year, all the way through their high school career. And then they're able to take those certifications with them, whether they go straight into the workforce or they go to continue their education. We also issued out over two hundred and forty-six Titans of CNC certifications. So those are made up of CAD, CAM, and CNC certifications. So the students have to first model their part in Onshape. They submit that to Titans of CNC. Then they have to create the program for it, and that's done in Fusion. They also submit that. And then the final step is actually cutting it out on the CNC mill. So that's cool. They actually get to cut it out. There's an inspection sheet. They get to go through the full inspection process. Use that VeriSurf Probe Arm that we got through the grant this year to do the final inspection. And then I sign off on it and I submit that to Titans of CNC. The last certification that, we only had a couple of students do it this year, but the Haas Certified Operator. So I'm looking to hopefully implement more of that in the future. But we had two mill operator and two lathe operator certifications. So that is followed with some online tests from Haas and then a hands-on test with me. They walk through the machine, set up a part, run a part, make sure they know what they're talking about, and go through that full certification process. So just the last, thank you to the SME Education Foundation for the grant, SWWC, as well as Celine Area Schools for the support in our program. We had a really great year this year, so I'm super proud of it. But if you guys feel free, email me questions. I'm happy to answer questions here, as well as on my LinkedIn, I post updates about competitions, field trips, what the students are doing. So, thank you.
Before you sit down, any questions, quick questions from the board? Go ahead, Jennifer.
I love your LinkedIn. You know that. He, if you're not following him on LinkedIn, his posts are great. And even if you just give it a quick like, it shares with your entire network, which could be other businesses or organizations that they can partner with. So please keep doing that. I love to see my friend Ian Fried Holmes on that other day. That was awesome. And I just really recognized Sarah, which, who are you? Okay, hi Sarah. I just wanted to, because the audience and anybody watching doesn't have this, this nice beautiful letter. It says, Trent instructed, this is a part of the letter, Trent instructed each of his students to shake hands and introduce themselves to the numerous employers and subject matter experts at the conference. The effect was contagious. By the end of the event, hundreds of other students were doing the same. Several sponsors and SME members were so impressed with Trent's students that they asked to participate as volunteers. Like, there's no better testimonial of these students being good ambassadors of Celine Area Schools. So thank you for modeling the way.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I did a little research while you were talking about the Stratasys F-170. Because I have a little tiny 3D printer in my office at home. This is freaking amazing. And it lives in Chelsea, I assume, or?
Uh, there, Chelsea does have one as well, but we have one at, at the high school now, so.
Okay, so these are, these are state-of-the-art, cutting-edge tools that are absolutely phenomenal. And I, I love that our students are having a taste of how they work.
Yes, yeah.
Did you have to go through much modification of the building in order to, to print? Because this, this is thermal-grade.
Yeah, so the, the really cool thing, and this actually was really evident with the recent skills competition, the students completely used that Stratasys. So they're able to actually take some of these designs, they come up with some crazy stuff. And now that we have dissolvable supports on the Stratasys printer, they can print whatever they want, throw it in the dunk tank, and all the supports are gone. They don't have to worry about removing them inside little holes or anything. It's, it's very cool. So it's cool because we have the kind of hobby-level printers in the classroom, and then they can also use the industrial printer, so they get to see both sides of it.
I'm not even going to look at the price tag because it's out of my range. Question, Darcy.
You have a very great workspace with a lot of machines. Did you have to get rid of any other equipment to make room for all of these new things? Yeah.
Yep, yep. So we've been moving some equipment in and out. So most of the stuff that came from the SME grant, we were able to fit in spots. And I'm still rearranging stuff. But then we also received from a state grant, some new manual mills. So we sold the old manual mills, replaced those with the new ones. So kind of upgrading equipment as I go. And eventually I'll run out of space, but for now, we're making it work.
I know, and I appreciate it. When I walked in there, I said this was not my wood shop class from my own little school. I recognized nothing. Thank you for the work that you do.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
So how much of your time, energies, all that are you spending on professional development and learning and bringing up to speed on all this? I appreciate your dedication, and this is what I'm getting at.
This past year's definitely been a lot of that. I've been, is it six weeks, I want to say, of professional development? Different trainings, getting certified myself so that I can certify the students. So I'm wrapping that up. I've got a couple more to either do this summer or kind of sometime next year. But it's cool being able to go to these different trainings, learn from other instructors, get certified, and know that I can certify my students as well.
Well, I appreciate that enthusiasm.
Yeah, thank you.
I was going to say the same thing, that I think your enthusiasm for your students shows through both here and in the pictures. And that's, that's got to be great for them to have, you modeling both that enthusiasm and like, learning to talk to people, which isn't easy for high schoolers sometimes. And then I wanted to thank the SME representatives for that amazing gift of money and capital and, and this very nice letter honoring our students, you know, sort of on behalf of the Celine community. Thank you for the, you know, the work you do to help fund great teachers like Mr. Trout and all of our other teachers in this program.
Well, LinkedIn is down for the, for the last five minutes, but I will be certainly checking out your. You know, I was, I was clicking the QR code.
Absolutely.
All right, well, thank you so much, and I appreciate that. And thank you for joining us this evening. And yay, if we have questions, you know we will send them to you.
Absolutely. Feel free to stop by at any point too. I'm always happy to show off the shop and what the students are doing.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, since we have our clapping hands all warmed up, I'd like to interrupt your presentation for just a second. Tommy has come straight, our student, or one of our two student reps. Kate was unable to make it tonight. She will be here next, next meeting. Tommy was out coaching tennis this evening, right, last-minute replacement? And we just want to say, say a few words about your service this year, and I'll let Dr. Lodge.
Right, so we'd like to thank both our student representatives, Tommy Allman and Kate Sonnendey. Kate couldn't be here tonight. But I want to present to you both a five-hundred-dollar scholarship. And read our little hornet plaque here. With gratitude for your time, insight, and leadership as the student representative to the Board of Education for the 2024-25 school year. Thank you for bringing student voice to the table and helping shape the future of our schools. With appreciation, Celine Area Schools Board of Education. So thank you, Tommy and Kate. And oh, Tommy is going to University of Michigan next year? And Kate, and Kate is going to the University of Tennessee. Oh, okay. Getting there. Terrific. All right, we're going to go ahead and.
We're going to call an audible and ask you to take a picture, Jackie. I gave, I gave Tommy the option of saying something before he left, but Tommy? He was going to, okay, great.
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to get to know the Board of Education, this side of service and public policy. It's been, uh, interesting in more ways than I thought it was going to be. And I also want to say thank you, shout out to some of my teachers that kind of inspired me to do this. I took AP Gov and I came to some of these. And when the opportunity presented itself, I kind of had that background knowledge and that kind of drive to, to do it. So thank you to my teachers too. And I guess, but thank you so much for all the opportunities and the chances that I was able to have to be here with you guys. So thank you.
I got to say, Tommy, you were here for some of the most interesting board meetings we've had and some of the driest. And you, and through it all, you, you hung through it. Thank you so much, Tommy. Appreciate it. I'd like to hand the podium over to Lauren Gold, who is the Chair of our Policy Committee for an update on first readings on some policies.
Sorry, I was just trying to get the policies out so we could talk about them.
That's page nineteen in your packet.
Yeah, I know. I got to get to nineteen. So I guess we'll just go through them one by one. Do we need to re, I don't recall, do we need to read the entirety of the, okay, I didn't think so, but.
It would be greatly appreciated if we could just hit the highlights. And I'm sure Darcy and I'll help you with that.
That is indeed what I will do. So the first one is Policy 5330.01. This was revised at the request of both Neola because there are new legal immunity provisions set forth such that the school personnel is not liable for either using an epinephrine administration or not. And then our very sharp-eyed and smart school nurse, Karen Harvey, noted that we are now not just using epinephrine pens or needles, but also we have nasal spray available. So we changed that language. And we also sort of clarified the, a little bit about the procedures for who gets notified when a student has an event, just based on my knowledge of events and mostly Karen's knowledge of events here at school. And so those are the changes made there.
Can I just ask a quick question? This policy, this change of language, is it my understanding that it is slowly working its way through the legislature and will eventually, with this, we're ahead of the game, in other words?
Yeah, exactly. That's kudos to Karen that she noticed when the policy came up for other things that it really leaves out a new, you know, a new form of. And so it just brings the policy up to date. And yes, I think probably everybody else will be soon to follow. So do we need a motion for that one, or do you want to go through all of them?
There's no motion yet. We're just discussing at this point, so.
Okay, so that's the first one. Then we get to Policy 7540.09. This is a artificial intelligence policy that basically just talks about keeping all use of AI in accordance with state and federal law as well as board policy. So it's, the, these policies are going to probably continue to change, speaking of J, as the technology continues to change. But this is just a needed update to clarify and put in writing our policy regarding AI. The next one is the Staff Technology Acceptable Use and Safety. This sort of updates the terminology references authentication and adds some cybersecurity procedures. And so this, this is for staff. We had already approved updates for students. So this just keeps the two policies in line. The next one is Policy 5500. It really, this one overlaps with 7540.09, but it's talking about academic honesty as it pertains to AI. And then the last one is a policy that had just not been discussed in Celine, but has been in an older, like, you know, in the 2020s, Neola policy. So this is talking about security for our facilities and gives the superintendent discretion to, it doesn't ask the superintendent to do anything in particular, but gives the superintendent discretion to use new security technologies as needed and as felt appropriate by the superintendent and the Director of Security. That's it. Big thanks to Betty for all of her help in preparing everything, always.
Are there any questions that you, the rest of the board can pose to Darcy, myself, or Lauren?
I have one. And seeing as how Dr. McVeigh was on the committee, I'm assuming this would get addressed. But for, for, let's see. For the artificial intelligence use as it pertains to how it's used in the district, would it be prudent to explicitly indicate that no personal identifiable information of students or staff should ever be put into an AI engine?
I want to say that data security and cybersecurity is, is a policy that exists right now somewhere in the sets of policies. But I, I don't know if we need to make something specific, but let's look into that.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, but most of the AI engines are open and a lot of them are free. And that's because they're learning and they're using our information to learn. So it, when, when I'm, when I'm teaching community supervision professionals about AI, I have to warn them constantly to not put personal identifiable information into those. So that, that was just one thing. I know this is a first reading and it's going to evolve considerably. I just, I just wasn't sure. But if it, if it's covered in under other policies, I, that's probably sufficient. I just wanted to make sure.
Well, if it is, we could certainly make a reference to it from this policy as well. Thank you.
So can I just ask, are you looking toward having disciplinary consequences if a student were to put their name or identification in? Or are you just looking for the teachers to make a point of educating students about why not to, or both?
Maybe both. I don't want to, I don't want to make a statement on what, if any, disciplinary policy should be adapted to that other than part of the policy should be, that staff and students should not put other staff and students' personal identifiable information into any AI engine.
It also sounds like you're identifying a best practice that may or may not be covered in the policy.
Yeah, I mean, typically, typically when, like, if they wanted to, if a teacher wanted to teach something about how to do an analysis on grades, you would use an ID for a student rather than a first name, last name, just as an example. But it, like I said, if it's covered under other policies about how personal identifiable information is used, then it doesn't need to be in here. It's just because the engines that are out there are learning from everything that we're putting in there, that's.
One of the things that, because this is so new, and I know it's also going to change, this time next year, we'll be having this conversation. And they'll be talking about agentic AI. And this free, wide-open system stuff may cease to exist in any schools, anywhere, so. But it's good to keep our eyes and attention open to it. Brad, you had a question?
I just have more of a comment. So I just would caution about the disciplinary side a little bit. And the only reason I would say that is because I could speak to my knowledge as a teacher that like, this stuff is so evolving and so new to us in the classroom that we can make mistakes we didn't know we were going to make and that we were going to do and that we were gonna, right? And so like, I could see a place for authentic and meaningful, like, I would like to see it more like presented in like a professional development stance or some type of thing so that we can constantly be learning and saying, hey, you don't want to do that, but you might just make, it would have unintended consequences potentially if we put it in like the discipline portion of our AI policy. That's just my take.
I, I agree. That's why I said I didn't want to comment specifically on that.
As a teacher, I can tell you, it's just complicated. And our kids know more about it than we do. So it's scary.
And, and it is evolving a lot and a lot, I mean, this isn't, hasn't been included in a lot of professional development yet. In my industry, so I know it's not in other industries. And it, it's growing so quickly and changing so rapidly. And California is actually the first state to use this in corrections. So it's, it's real, I, I don't. it's real, I, I don't want to comment on disciplinary action because I don't know what would even.
I just think we should leave a little space for, for quote-unquote grace on it, right, and learning.
Well, the reason for my question there was it just, was actually just because I thought we could put it in administrative guidelines. Like, not we, but the, you know, the teaching and learning team could put it in their administrative guidelines and professional development if it was sort of a, hey, this is the reason we want to talk to the kids about this. It really doesn't have to go in policy. That's, that was the only reason that I was trying to clarify.
It, it could maybe be, um, and we can get Jay's opinion on it, but if there's already a policy about what staff and students can do with other staff and students' information about posting online or anything, it could just be included as, this would be an offset of that or an offshoot of that.
It might already be covered by FERPA law too, and so in that regard too.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, well, it probably most certainly is. I'm just looking at it from, people don't realize, you know, they put it into an AI engine and they think it's just for their viewing. So that, that's what I'm afraid, you know, because they don't understand the difference.
In June, thank you for bringing it, Mr. Grossman, in, uh, Jay Grossman, our Technology Director. In June, he and I are sitting down to have a conversation about some archaic language regarding videotaping and not taping over videos of surveillance, et cetera. So I, I will put that on the agenda to have a conversation with him about that language too, with the permission of the Policy Committee Chair. Right. Anything else? Thank you very much for the first reading. Smooth, uneventful. Wow. Anything else, sir? This brings us to Administration Board Updates. I will let Dr. Latch start off.
Uh, I will be very brief. Just want to thank, um, thank everybody for honoring me and the other retirees when, you know, Carol points out four hundred and twelve years of service to the district. That's quite a lot of institutional knowledge and, and, and service. And, and I know that I've, I've felt proud over the years to be part of such an outstanding staff in, in every, every capacity, in every facet. It's been, it's been a great journey and I've been, um, very lucky to be part of it, so, thank you.
We'll start at whatever end. You want to go start? Start. Jennifer Stebbin, we'll just make sure that Ben can catch up.
As a perfect segue, Steve, um, we might have all written a little something, um, so here's mine. As we celebrate all retirees tonight, the team wanted to be sure to recognize your specific contributions to Celine area schools because we know that you do not like a fuss, uh, and that you really appreciate trustees being brief. We will try. Um, we will try to say something, uh, short and sweet. From me, a deep thank you for the many, many years in the district focused on children and staff. We spent your first two years as a superintendent together when I was president and we did it in a pandemic. I am so grateful for your calm, uh, your empathetic and collaborative partnership during this time. It meant so much to the district at a very critical time. When we went through the hiring process for your role back then, we received hundreds of emails from community members and staff. I always believed to share the voices, that we should share the voices of those that we serve. So I picked one and wanted to read an excerpt from one of those letters written by a staff member at Pleasant Ridge. Uh, quote, "His support and loyalty to Celine School shows in his dedication an impeccable record within our district. Dr. Latch is what makes Celine a great place to live, work, and have my own daughters receive an excellent education. Dr. Latch has grown both as an individual and educator and continues to make all of those strides in Celine. I cannot think of a better candidate that is prepared, experienced, and as genuine as Dr. Steve Latch is in leading Celine schools for the foreseeable future. I felt and I feel the same way about you being in this role and also doing the same for my children. So from the board, we are making you a very small plaque in celebration of your special advocacy around STEM and we will hang it in the new space this fall when it opens at Celine High School. Thank you, Steve."
Anyone else want to chirp up now? We were going to, but Jennifer disrupted. Jennifer used her disruptor voice and changed that. We'll start with Tim now.
I'll start. Um, so I did want to thank Tommy and Kate and their chairs here, um, for their involvement on the board. They, they have, uh, experienced, uh, some interesting board meetings over the last year. And, um, and, and really of all the years we've had, um, student reps, they, they really have had some really good questions and, and stuff, so they were really engaged, so that was really good. Um, then also our wonderful staff and then seeing them, we had so many staff members that, um, were honored today and, um, you know, we, they, they've touched a lot of lives in four hundred and twelve years. And then specifically with Steve, um, you know, Steve's very relational and very personable and, um, uh, I, I go back to years ago, I, I don't even know how many years ago, it's probably six or eight years ago. Probably six years ago, we were going through a tough time on the board at that point in time with some things that were going on and, uh, I, I was kind of, once again, maybe not in alignment with the rest of the board on some of the things. And Steve came up to me after the board meeting and said, you know what, Tim? After every one of these events, I'm going to call you and tell you how it went. And so he did, and he stepped up and he didn't have to do that, but he did. I appreciate that.
All right. Um, I want to start off talking about our graduating seniors and that we get to celebrate them next Sunday. And I'm excited to do that specifically. Um, Tommy and Kate, want to thank them as well and just, um, it's just a good time. Seven and a half more days, right, staff and students and, and we, we aren't counting the minutes. I swear, we're, we're counting the seconds. But, um, but the fact of the matter is we're gonna get there. We're gonna do this and it's, it's awesome. I also want to send out and thank all the retirees for who are in attendance tonight and just any of the other retirees who couldn't join us. I have a tremendous amount of, um, respect and admiration for a number of those individuals. They impact our kids' lives and so, um, you know, Carol talked about it being like a city and we all do like have our part. And, uh, every single stu-, every single person does, did an important job for students, right? And all of those jobs are important and, and so I want to make sure I recognize that. So one of those, uh, retirees is indeed Steve Latch and we've all agreed to, you know, roast him tonight a little bit here. So, um, so here's my Tom Brady roasting thing or my Charlie. So, you should know, I first met Steve Latch, I had an interesting, my, my, I was thinking about when I met him, I met him at a cornhole league. Um, a friend of ours was hosting a cornhole league in Ypsilanti Township and Steve was the, his principal at the time. And so I remember going there and I, I met Steve Latch and aside from the fact that he's a terrible cornhole player, um, he's really bad, but like the, but the reality is that he, um, he came across as like just a really humbling, positive and affirming person, right? And I remember thinking, man, he'd be a really good principal. He'd be someone that I myself would, would like to work for, right? And so I just remember you leaving that impression as we were standing on the deck up top after, after cornhole because, you know, it wasn't all about the cornhole, but we'll move on. Um, and so, you know, Steve's, uh, trajectory kind of took off like a rocket ship from there, right? And he got promoted to Director of Curriculum and, and, and there's that, so. I want everyone, I think everybody who knows Steve knows this, but his work ethic is top-notch. I mean, like, I had always heard about his infamous Google Calendar and, but then like you start reading his emails to the student or to the, you know, families and Steve's everywhere, right? Like, I mean, I bet you there are staff who like look left and right just to make sure when they walk into a building or into a room that he's not there already. Um, and so like it, you do a lot of things for this district and you want to be unsung, but yet you're a champion and very visible for us too. And, and my students know you. My kids know who their superintendent is by name. They can point to you. They can say hi to you. They can shake your hand, all of it, so. Now I will tell you, as a trustee in, in January of twenty twenty, I, one of the things is you're really nervous. It was like my first meeting ever and I, I'm trying to find my voice, but I'm like part of this new team. And one of the things that gives me great pleasure and joy is like, I think that was the first vote I ever took was appointing you as the new interim, um, superintendent, so. Yeah, did I make the motion? All right, I bet I did because I was just like, I don't know, let's go. So anyway, so we nailed that decision then and, uh, I think we also nailed that decision when we hired you later that spring. Okay, so, and I can go on and on and on and talk to you about Steve's dedication. I could talk to you about his notebooks and his composition books and I can't imagine how many composition books. He has stuff in a room somewhere that Laura is gonna have to help him get rid of. I mean, it's gotta be a dumpster full. Um, but the guy just, he is dedicated. He takes notes. He, and, and all of it. And I also want to, on behalf of the Finance Department, who has been paying for all of those composition books over the year. But, um, but, but seriously, Steve, I want to thank you for your dedication to students and Celine families. One of the best decisions I think Celine has ever made was to support you for superintendent. I thank Scott Grayden for preparing you well and taking you under his, his wing. And you have made an impact on this school district that will far outlast your time here. And so it was a, a great pleasure and you have a caring manner. You deal with students and staff and families and you have a legacy that will be remembered around here for a very, very long time. So I'm thankful that the top of our stationery said Steve Latch is superintendent and I thank you, Steve, for, for serving our students and families. And me.
I'll start with a, a couple of things. I did want to say congrats to our, uh, seniors who are, um, looking forward to graduating this weekend and to Kate and Tommy for being fantastic student reps this past year. Uh, I was also honored to, to watch the retirees, um, sort of almost a, a sunrise to sunset viewing for me because Sufan from Pooh Corner was here, uh, and then one of my son's senior, uh, te-, senior year teachers was here as well, as long as some in the middle. So that was, uh, exciting to see and I'm happy for them. They've all, they've all worked hard and earned it. I, I did want to add that I am excited about the SWWC, uh, that CTE Possible Milage that's coming up. While I understand it, you know, it's a tax on us now, it's also an investment in our futures and we're putting those kids into the workforce in the, some in the very near future. And who will be a part of our lives, be it as a CNA, a cosmetologist, someone who is working at machinery at Solar or Leeper. Or, you know, they're working on our computers and cybersecurity. So yes, it's, it's a small shared tax and, but it is a long-term investment in ourselves as well as them. And Steve, so I've only, uh, been with you in this role for a few months and I think I know you, uh, the most, uh, from PTA and PTO, I think probably over ten years. And, uh, worked with you through the district parent council meetings and different events and uh, the guidance and expertise that you brought to those conversations and looking to move each school and the district forward, uh, in, in doing what's best for students and incorporating families into that and the community was a really holistic, uh, view to take for our district because we're very student-focused. But what goes into creating that experience for them is very broad and, uh, deep. And your support and work in that did not go unnoticed. It's very much appreciated and you will be very much missed, so thank you.
I do, I will say a quick thing. Um, I just have two, I only have two memories of Steve. Right, yeah, right. The first one, when I first met him and the last time before he became superintendent. So I just want to share this really quickly. He, uh, I was a, a humble professor at Eastern Michigan in the Teacher Education Department. I was on a committee for a retreat and we needed some guest speakers, some superintendents or assistants or Cara Davis's to come out and, and speak, the techni-, the, the learning specialists. And I said, well, why don't I just go in my own backyard? I, you know, I hardly knew the schools. I hardly knew where Liberty was. And I, Sally is her name? Waltz? Patty Waltz, sorry, thank you. I knew it wasn't Sally, sorry, anyway. And I said, I want to meet your Director of Learning and I said, oh, that would be Steve Latch. Oh, that's great, that's great. Well, how can I meet him? And I said, I don't know, she said. I said, what do you mean? She said, well, is he in his office? She said, probably not. I says, why? She says, he's everywhere. He's everywhere but his office. And so eventually we did, I, I didn't even meet him before we dragged him over to the golf course where we're having the retreat and he did his thing and then got up and ran out the door, but it was great. That was my first meeting with the famous Steve Latch. The second time was during the interviews for superintendent and we, and I have interviewed hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people for really interesting jobs. And this was my first time for superintendent. We gave what, ten, fifteen questions or something like that? And they had roughly three minutes and twenty-three seconds to answer each one equally. Steve nailed each one. The timing was immaculate. He answered the questions perfectly, added a little nuance and flavor and style and flair to every single question and, and answer he gave. So when Brad made the motion, let's just, let's just move to nominate or ask Steve to be superintendent. Yeah, I, I may have seconded that because it was really clear. It was a very short putt. It was a case study for how to answer questions well in an interview. He did really exceptionally well on that. And after that, you know, then he became superintendent and it all went to pot, right? No, 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 I was gonna say, and then I've enjoyed, I've enjoyed my three years of working with Steve as su-, as a, as Board President. And I'll pass it over to anyone else down the table who wishes to say something.
Okay, so, um, I would like to start with also congratulating both the retirees and the graduating seniors. And, um, I'd also like to mention that it was Memorial Day this past weekend and so I'd like to honor any, uh, Celine families who've lost a loved one serving the country or Celine alumni. I'm sure over the years there have been, uh, many who, uh, lost their lives, um, fighting for the country. So, um, I just want to mention that. On a happier note, uh, I would like to thank Steve. Uh, it is obvious that he started as a teacher and is a te-, has a teacher's heart. Um, he taught me a lot about being a board member and about how education works and I've, uh, that's true of many people in central administration, but he sort of spearheads that and, uh, that's been really, um, uh, helpful to me as a, both as a professional and in this role, so I'd like to thank him for that. Um, my, um, own students would be, uh, uh, sad if I did not mention their, uh, fondness and appreciation of Snow Day Steve. I can't believe that I got to mention it. I thought that someone else would have mentioned it for sure by now and, um, uh, there, you know, uh, it was appreciated. I think, you know, that, that just goes to show a certain amount of humility and humor that, uh, Steve brought to the role and, uh, being able to kind of identify with the students, which is a really important thing for any teacher. Um, and, you know, I love that, uh, out of all the things he could have picked, there's a picture of him driving the bus. And I reached out to, um, former trustee Jenny Miller because I knew she had worked with Steve a long time and she said, don't forget to highlight that he's always there to help, uh, at Ag Olympics or refereeing games. Um, and, you know, he just always has teachers' backs, so I can't take entire credit for that, but I reached out to Jenny because I knew that even though she's not here, she would, uh, want to lend her voice as well. So, um, thank you for all you've done for Celine area schools. I'm sure your legacy will continue to, uh, live on. Thank you for all the work you've been doing on top of everything else lately to help smooth the transition, uh, to Dr. Kowalski. And, uh, thanks for being such a great representative of our schools.
Uh, I would like to thank Tara and Trent, or Cara and Trent, man, got those letters mixed up. So Cara and Trent, uh, for the presentation today. I thought that was great. I hope to see that on the ballot this November and encourage everybody to vote, uh, for that. Uh, congratulations to the seniors and more importantly, over the next couple of weeks here, be safe in all your decision-making that you do. Uh, just, uh, enjoy the time, but also make good decisions. Uh, congrats to all the retirees. Uh, I'm sorry I couldn't make it, uh, to the reception, uh, before the meeting, but congratulations to all the retirees. Uh, I did not put anything formal, uh, together, uh, for Steve, but I jotted down my notes. And, um, I think, uh, I think everybody has realized so far in my few months here that I don't, uh, I'm not afraid to say what I mean, so, uh, So I will say that Steve is by far the hardest-working Superintendent I have ever seen. And I, no matter what anybody thinks of Steve, or disagrees with Steve, or agrees with Steve, they cannot say that he is not one of the hardest-working people we've ever had in this district, by far. I show up to things where there's eight people, and Steve is three of them, usually. So the Science Olympiad that, that Darcy invited me to, it was Darcy, me, Steve, and my daughter that showed up. And my daughter was like, is that the Superintendent? I said, yeah. Why is he here? I said, well, because he's involved, he is. Steve, you're involved in everything, I see you everywhere. You're, you're always willing to be an advocate for the people that are not advocates. I think that's huge. You follow up. Brad mentioned it about the notebooks, so in our meetings, and I see you writing the notebooks. I remember getting a follow-up from you like a month after we talked about something, and you had to remind me what I asked you about. So, but you follow up without, without fail, and you absolutely explain everything thoroughly to the point that I've had to ask you to please just, just keep your email short to me, I don't need that explanation, Steve. Just, just a yes or no would be great. But thorough, hard-working, dedicated. I, I, I think those are three really strong characteristics. I really hope Dr. Kowalski can inherit from you and, and do that for our district as well. So thank you.
You're not gonna say something, are you, Steve? No, you already did. We'll give you a chance to write, write something for the next two weeks, has it? The last board meeting, thank you. Mr. Goodman, when you're ready, I would like to finish my, I'd like to finish my comments with a quick update on the Board's contract negotiations with the S E A. I just have three slides I want to walk us through. Ben, the first slide. So this slide demonstrates the district's most recent proposal as of May 13th, 2025. During the 2025 school, 2026 school year, eligible employees will receive steps and lane changes, and a step is a 4% increase. There will be an additional 4% increase also on the salary schedule. During the next year, 26 to 27, eligible employees will receive step and lane changes, and a step again is 4% increase. There will also be an additional 2.5% increase on the salary schedule. So this offer represents a 14.5% salary increase for certified staff on steps, and a 6.5% salary increase for certified staff off steps over a two-year period. Next slide, please, sir. So this slide reflects the current salary schedule, and it demonstrates the salary changes to the schedule over the next two years. And we will post the entire proposed salary schedules on the Board of Education website for review. Finally, Slide 3, just gives you an example. This slide provides an example of one certified staff member who was hired in 2425 on Step 1, under the BA Lane. The highlighted cells in this example move us through 2025, 26 school year, and then into the 2026, 27 school year, just to see movement for this sort of sample. So if you've never seen these tables before, this is just a quick, easy way to figure out how to read them. And I'll leave it at that, thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to, and you can pull that down anytime, Ben. Like to entertain a motion to recommend the consent agenda as printed, please.
Some moved gold.
LLG, thank you.
Support, Stephen.
Stephen, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, opposed? Great, okay, item scheduled on the next agenda, sir.
All right, we have two scheduled reports and an athletic review of the department, and then I'll be giving a state and future of the district.
State of the district address. My last one. We do have one public comm, two public comments. That's coming up, I'll be mentioning that right after the public comment. So we'll start with Ruth Jane's taxpayer. Well, we have one for.
There we go.
Now Ruth, since this is.
There we go, I'm tall now.
You've always been tall in our hearts.
I saw that, yeah, yeah, I saw that.
Ruth, before you get started, I just want to draw your attention to our secretary, who will be timing at one minute, 30 seconds remaining. She will hold up the yellow book, and at the red book, we bring out the hook after three minutes.
Okay, this isn't gonna take long.
Thank you so much.
I am a taxpayer, I have no children, I do like a strong school system. I'm very happy with the school system, but I am a senior, and I'm very upset with the millage. And this literature that came out to get seniors to vote said we were gonna get almost 4.5 million in improvements to our senior center. And my understanding is that we're only gonna get between 2 to 2.5 million. So we're down $2 million by my math calculation. And that's all I'm calling about, I'm here to complain. And just let you know that, yes, I, you know, I didn't, I haven't come before because I have a Homeowners Association meeting that conflicts with your board meeting, but it was canceled tonight, that's why I came. So I didn't get any of my friends from the Senior Center to come. But I can tell you, I just want you to be aware, that we are all mad. So when you go to ask for another millage, you may not get us. Just, I want to know, to tell you that, so. And I don't know what to spend the $2 million on, I don't have an agenda. I would speak to Nancy and people at the Senior Center. But I understand discrepancies of maybe 100,000, 200,000. I am a CPA, I'm an attorney, a CMA, CPA. So I don't expect it to be 4.48 million. I realize there's rounding errors, but 2 million is a little bit too big of a discrepancy. We call that a material difference in accounting, all right? So there you go, that's all I want to say, that's why I came. I was gonna write you a letter, but it was easier to come.
Thank you very much, Ruth, I appreciate it.
I wish you would consider reevaluating how you're spending your money for the seniors.
Sarah. From SME Prime. I'm afraid I can't quite make out your last name. All right.
I'm sorry about that, I'm a left-hander, my handwriting is atrocious.
But as soon as you say it, it's, I can see it, thank you.
Thank you. So I'm actually, I just wanted to take a moment and speak in support of CTE. I know that Ryan Rowe had mentioned to you that we are in a CTE desert here in Celine, and you are, but that, I, I want the Board to understand that part of the reason that we have a CTE desert is because I think that the community here in Celine and Ann Arbor in general is very academic. You have U of M in your backyard, Michigan State, there's a lot of important schools here, and a lot of parents are saying, yes, go to college, go to college, go to college. But I think that, I, I want to say a moment that you need to have your academic students taking CTE courses. And I want to give you a story, my story, about how I got to be where I am, and let you make your own decision. So I grew up in Flat Rock, Michigan, I graduated high school in 2007, and I was an academic student. I was told during my time at Flat Rock that I was not allowed to take CTE courses because I'm an academic student. And to quote my high school counselor, CTE is for the dumb kids, and that's baloney. And I think that, I think that you know that, but this is something that the wider proportion of America needs to understand as well. I ended up taking the welding class when I was there at Flat Rock High School, and I graduated, and I went to work as a welder. I didn't go to college right away. And it gave me a wonderful opportunity to practice all of the math skills that I had learned in high school, made me develop an appreciation for the CT programming that I had there, and it helped me save a lot of money, because I did a couple of courses at Washtenaw County Community College as welding program, and I took a couple of math classes. I figured out what I wanted to do essentially, and from there, I went to university. And because I was working as a welder, I was making more money than my dad. So I graduated from Ferris State in 2012 with a bachelor's in welding engineering technology, and by the time I was 30, I had a master of science degree in career and technical education and was debt-free. I had no student loans. How many of your students can say that they can both do a CTE-type job, whether that's welding, machining, robotics, technician work, and also have a higher education degree? There are not many, but I, I think that we need that, because my time working as an engineer has taught me that the best engineers are the ones who aren't afraid to get their hands dirty. I, I think that that's important, and I just wanted to take a moment and say that. I'm now doing a PhD at Western Michigan University in workforce development. So I was, I was an academic student, like many of your students here in Ann Arbor, and I have thrived because of my CT program. I had an excellent teacher, and I had an excellent mentor when I graduated, who was also a former welding teacher, and they taught me to work hard. And that has carried me all the way through. So I hope that you can share that, and that passes through and is in support of your CT programs. Thank you.
Thank you for that added flavor for the argument, appreciate it. The next Board of Education meeting will be held on June 10th at 6 o'clock. Please note that change of time, it's 6 o'clock, not 6:30. We are starting off with a budget hearing. I'd like to entertain a motion to enter into closed session of the Board at 8:35. Bio break. 8:35 with the intent to re-enter open session by 9:00 PM for the purpose of collective bargaining, 8C of the Open Meetings Act. Under 8C, a simple majority vote is sufficient. Do I have a motion, please?
Some move.
Tim Austin? Brad Gerby, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Seven, oh, it is, thank you, we'll see you all sitting back here at 8:30. Thank you. Unless, of course, you're moving chairs around, Darcy.
Without objection, I'd like to re-enter the open session at 9:53. Just give me a second, please. I'd like to entertain a motion two. I'm going to carefully read this. "To establish a portion of the district's 2025-26 school calendar specifically through November 30, 2025 pursuant -- semicolon -- pursuant to the Michigan Public Education Employment Relations Act, the Board has the right to establish a portion of the calendar -- school calendar even though there is no formal agreement with the association." That is the motion that I am entertaining.
So moves, Tebbin.
Support Tizidis.
Jay Tizidis, do we have any discussion, comments? No, at this point. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Great, thank you very much. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn, please, at 9:54.
Motion, Tizidis.
Tizidis. Gerbi, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I'm going to tap us out. Thank you. I'm going to tap us out.